Good morning, everyone. This, the next head board of commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 7th, is called to order. If you'll please join me in a brief moment of silence and as we are silent, ask you to keep in mind all of those victims, survivors, families, friends, first responders who were affected by the violence in two cities this past weekend. And if you'll stand as you're able and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda would be the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda are recognitions. Cliff?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First up, we have Nancy Carraway, the water superintendent, to recognize water plant operator, Ryan Blythe, as a new employee.
How are y'all doing? I'd like to introduce Ryan Blythe. He's from Cumberland County. He attended Longwood College from 2006 to 2010. He's been down here since, working down here since he's been 16. First at Kelly's and then at Awful Arthur's. He just finished a four-year employment with EnvioBass, EnvioBiomass, a wood pellet plant in Franklin, Virginia, where he served as operator and lead. In his free time, he enjoys watching sports and grilling. We're very happy to have him here, Ryan Blythe.
We're glad to have you. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome here. Just along the line.
Good luck to you, Ryan.
And another water plant operator, Mr. Ethan Ware.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce Ethan Ware. He's born in Danville, Virginia. He moved here when he was four years old and has been here ever since. He graduated high school in 2012. He has an associate's from the College of the Albemarle and attended Liberty University 2015, 2016. He has worked for the frozen yogurt custard from 2009 to 14, where he left as night manager. He just finished a four-year employment at the Outer Banks Hospital as floor technician. In his free time, Ethan is either writing, drawing, gaming, or paying bills while listening to music. We're very lucky to have him and Ryan, and we look forward to working with them.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from the director of the Outer Banks Sporting Events, Ms. Ginny Ash, to give us an update of what's going on with their programs.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks so much for having me, Mayor Kahoon and members of the board. I appreciate your time, as always, and it looks like you have a lengthy agenda, so I'll keep it concise as it's been recommended. So this is a little glimpse at 2018 for our report, you know, in terms of our events and everything. The year of 2018 had some changes for us in terms of just staff at our place and a little bit of a change in our events, giving one up and adopting another one recently here in Nag's Head, so I'll talk to that as far as what's been of late and how we're looking into 2019. So if we can, do I have this?
Adapt the other one, Jim.
All right. So quickly, our mission at Outer Banks Sporting Events is to organize and promote sports competition and healthy living, provide financial resources for those in need. We deal directly with the Outer Banks Relief Foundation and Dare Education Foundation, so we contribute not only to folks in need, but also to the local economy. So that's been in place since 2010 is when Outer Banks Sporting Events was officially formed. As many of you know, the twenty, or the first marathon was in '06, 2006, and then from there we formed in 2010. So here's just a snapshot of 2018, our participation in terms of registrants through the year for all of our events, 6105, and that was without our Storm the Beach event, which happens, or happened for four years at Jeanette's Pier, and we have a new replacement for that that's not quite the volunteer killer, and it's a little bit simplified version, but we had a great response this past Memorial Day. So with their guests, we asked some people, or all of the registrants, what it looks like in terms of the people that will be coming with them. So their guests with them, it's 2.8, I believe, is the average amount of people that came with our participants. So that just breaks down 18,000 people that came with the folks that registered, and then a little bit of demographic information. But a lot of, the majority of our participants are from out of town, which, you know, we'd like to see folks come and visit, and then 19 to 20% usually are first-time visitors to the Outer Banks, which we like to see. We try to keep them coming back. So there are lots of people that support our course and our cause out there on race weekend, Dare County School Groups, aid stations, you name it, we can use some hands, and a lot of folks come together for that, so it's awesome to see. Local vendors set up at our expo, and then area businesses with sponsorship are able to show what they got to all the folks coming from out of town. So that's our local engagement. And then in terms of local economy, there's 6,100 folks with guests and then adding back the participants gave us 23,000 runners and guests throughout the year of 2018. So that, you know, collectively is a huge number. Again, they stayed 2.6 nights and then brought 2.8 folks with them on average. So that you can see there the total, a number of hotel rooms and then rental homes, we sort of even break that out with a different cost assigned to them. That's an average, you know, application. And so in total, accommodations with houses and rental homes totaled $1.7 million. And then we assigned $75 per day for those days they stayed, and then that per diem impact combined is nearly $6 million, and that's for the whole county. So that's, you know, they can stay between Corolla and Hatteras, basically, and spend that money and be part of our local economy. So that's sort of the spread. Again, our foundations that receive our proceeds are very supportive of us, and we've been working with them since the inception, and since that time of 2010, we've given over a million dollars to each charity over that span of time. So that's our wheels in motion. So here's specific to Nag's Head, if we want to zoom in and take a look at throughout those events, the 6,100 folks, 1,359 participants and their guests stayed properly in Nag's Head as far as the reporting they give us at registration. So with their visitors and their accommodations and per diem total, you can see that breakdown. It's estimated that over 3 million, almost $3.7 million throughout 2018 was spent or generated and hopefully, you know, evident, stayed right here in Nag's Head. So we do have that breakdown, and it's nice to see those numbers in collection of the year because of all the support that you guys give us. In the moment of silence, I thought how fortunate we are to have such a strong public safety element, to be able to have a safe event. Not only that, but our volunteers sharing the streets, it goes on and on, so I can't thank you enough and hope that those numbers help when I come to you and ask for another permit or when I request something that's new. It is for the good of the event, and I definitely feel the love and support from here in Nag's Head, so that's been fantastic. I mentioned that our Storm the Beach event, that was typically in June, we backed it up just a bit, and we had Band in the Sand at Jeanette's Pier. A pleasure to work with Jeanette's and your folks, Mr. Ogburn, and it's a pleasure to work with your new staff, and that was smooth and very well received. We had it on as a kickoff to summer Memorial Day weekend, so that's a new one. And then coming up, we've got our triathlon in September, that's on Roanoke Island, and then in marathon weekend, we're looking at November 8 through 10 for our, sort of our flagship event, that's the big one. So, you know, we certainly want everybody to recognize the event, sort of be prepared. So if there's any questions, even if you don't think of them today, please track me down. We'd love for you to be a part. Nag's Head's a huge part of it. We run from Woods Road into Manio for marathon, and we come right through your streets and Nag's Head Woods and all that, and over the bridge. So a lot of support for that one, and then a lot of people stay here during triathlon as well, right in Nag's Head, because that's sort of the closest place with options. But again, can't thank you all enough. In 2019, we're looking at adding a VIP package for 19 slash 20 for our participants and their folks that come. That secondary audience is really important to pay attention to also, so they're not just looking at their watch, waiting for their runner. They have exposure to our area and a good experience as well. And that's pretty much a wrap, so I'll certainly answer any questions or, like I said, be available today or anytime you're wondering what is going on. But just again, a big thank you, and we're looking forward to a strong forge ahead with our next round of events, our two biggest ones coming up in the fall here. So I will, again, thank you so much.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Not right now.
Highlight the date of the fall marathon for us.
Sure, that's November 8 through 10, so we've got, the 8th is really just sort of the lead-in and our expo for the athletes and everybody getting assimilated, so we'd like to have them come for several days and stretch it out a little bit for the worth it of coming down into our remote area and then having them explore the Outer Banks as much as they can otherwise. But on Saturday, we've got an 8K, 5K fun run. The Saturday events are at the high school, First Flight High School, and then Sunday's the, sort of the biggest combo, the half and the full marathons, Sunday, the 10th.
All right. Great. Thank you. It's really nice for, you know, relatively small community to have an organization like yours that does such a great job with so many events and bring so many visitors to our area, at a great time of year as well, especially the fall. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we have a local piece of artwork each time. Gretchen Hargus, who lives in Kill Devil Hills, painted this for the 2018 artwork, and you can add it to your collection, so thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
She did a nice job. Have a great day.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will receive comments from the members of the public on any matters that the board, I'm sorry, that the public wishes to address to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue. The board does not usually respond to public comment, but it does allow members of the public to have an opportunity to address the board as a body with any concerns you have. There is a public hearing later on on the agenda for the UDO, so if you have an interest in commenting on that, you could hold those comments until that public hearing. But for those who wish to comment on anything else, if you'll please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the whole board, and I will be keeping the time and will let you know when your time is up.
Good morning. David Bragg, 5205 Southland Drive. You've seen me here many times. I'm here again. I had said I would keep coming back until I have some type of relief or change in the current situation of garbage collection recycling, so here I am. When I call my senator, I receive a reply in a timely manner. I haven't even received no reply from the board, the mayor, or anybody else concerning these issues. So today, I guess I didn't single anyone out. So today, I am singling out the mayor. Mayor Kahoon, I'd like responses to my questions that follow. And to kind of kick this off, if you drive down the beach road around neighborhoods any Saturday or Sunday, you could see all the garbage cans and recycling cans that are put out in violation of city code. First, have you reviewed prior material I provided identifying the recycling program as a hoax? Secondly, why haven't you used the 30-day clause to stop the contract that is costing thousands of dollars per month to keep with no actual recycling occurring? Third, can you provide the analysis that you completed to identify the areas that would receive a second day of garbage collection and others taken away? Fourth, why isn't the town code 30-6 paragraph E being enforced? If it has been directed so, that may reach a level of malfeasance. And why was it changed? If you're not aware of it, it states "Storage and removal of trash and recycling carts." Trash and recycling carts must be placed for pickup within the street right of way and within four feet of the improved portion of the street, but not on the improved portion of the street. Trash and recycling shall be placed for pickup no earlier than the day before scheduled pickup time. Anybody could drive around and see that's not the case. And it should also be taken away no later than the day of collection, which, if you drive around, you could see that does not happen. The property owner shall be responsible for such placement and removal. We have mega home rentals. They should be treated as a business, and they should be charged for those services. The code has also been changed to allow the cans or carts to be stored outside the home area within feet of the improved road. Why? I don't feel I should have to call the office to have the code enforced. If I was having a home remodel, I guarantee you that code enforcement people would be all over me. When the offenses occur, it's generally on the weekend. There's no one to call. So the department needs to have approved overtime or a person that works weekend. Fifth, why are the homes on sand wedging exempt from the code? The homes basically put their garbage on a driveway, so the code cannot be enforced. I spoke with Mr. Snyder, he went there yesterday, as a matter of fact, and found garbage outside the recycling bin, which he called and had Key's Realty come and pick it up. The recycling's out, garbage is around it, which is not recycling. He could enforce that, but he can't enforce the carts actually being moved because that is not a city road, it's a driveway. The city road is the back of the houses. How that code ever got done, I have no idea, because I don't know how you could have a house built on a driveway and then not have codes being able to be enforced. Finally, what are the procedures for the mayor to respond to a concerned citizen? If they are detailed on the town website, I could not find them. And as I said earlier, real estate is a business down here. You've got mega homes up there that are charging thousands of dollars each week. I don't think it's too much to ask for those homeowners to pay to have those garbage cans placed and then replaced by the real estate company that is charging them quite a bit of money to have all those functions taken care of. And having had a rental home, believe me, when something goes wrong, they hit you up $45 an hour to show somebody how to turn a TV on. So charging a little bit extra for them to have someone to do all these services is not beyond the realm. Thank you for your time. I await your response, Mr. Mayor. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Is anybody else interested in public comment? If not, at this time, we will close the public comment session.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. You have those items before you, and a motion on the consent agenda would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, can we ask Mr. Ryan why we left off, why they had to change the hatchel deal for 1.7 miles of sand fencing before? Just wanted to know why.
Yes, no, yes, certainly. Can, the procedure for doing this, since it's in the consent agenda, can we ask a question about one of those items, or do we need to pull it out of the agenda and put it down for discussion? Because there's one, there is a question about one of the consent.
Pull it out. I'd say pull it, you should, federally, you'd pull it out.
Okay, all right. Then let's remove the change order for sand fencing. That is consent agenda item seven, and that would be removed and placed. New business item I, two. A motion to that order would be appropriate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Then back to the approval of the consent agenda as modified with the elimination of item seven.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven, which will be considered later. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Public hearing item F1 was withdrawn by the applicant, which brings us to public hearing F2, which is a hearing to consider adoption of the proposed UDO.
All right, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed Unified Development Ordinance, which will also include the repeal of the existing chapters of the town code that will be included in the UDO. We'll begin with the presentation by Planning Director, Michael Zener.
Thank you. Good morning. Before you, for our public hearing, is the draft or final version of the Unified Development Ordinance. This product is the final work product of a 24-month second phase to a four-year strategic project to update the comprehensive plan for the town and then develop a Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. As the board is aware, there was a seven-member technical committee that assisted staff and the consultant in developing the UDO, and we estimate that each of those members worked approximately 70 volunteer hours to bring this document to today. With this is an adoption ordinance, and I'll go through that separately at the end. As the town attorney indicated, there are several other chapters of the town code that are affected by the adoption of the UDO. But in short, the UDO is a recodification and consolidation of five principal chapters in the town code. They include flooding, soil erosion and sedimentation, stormwater, subdivision and zoning are the principal chapters that are unified in the UDO. The goals for adopting the UDO were to reorganize and update the town code into a user-friendly format, implement portions of the comprehensive plan, provide consistency with North Carolina state statutes, and address staff concerns. I'm happy to go into more detail about the changes incorporated into the UDO. Some of those, or many of those, are included and addressed in the PowerPoint presentation that was prepared for the April 11th community meeting, which is included in your packages. Again, I can go into more detail there. I can have Holly White or Andy Garman or Kelly Wyatt, who also put in a considerable amount of time each in the development of the UDO before my arrival, and they can probably provide you with more detailed answers. I'm also happy to walk you through the adoption ordinance, which is lengthy, but it also is intended to correct all of the citations and update the citations throughout the town code, those citations to those five chapters that are going to be repealed and incorporated into the UDO. It's intended to update the citations and references to those generally. In some cases, we deleted sections in their entirety because they were either obsolete or the provisions were being incorporated within other chapters of the UDO, or other chapters now incorporated within the UDO. And in at least one instance, we're proposing that a current chapter or section of the current zoning ordinance be readopted as an appendix to a section or chapter of the town code because it's still relevant, and that deals with permitting and building during and after hazards and disasters. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I may need to defer to other staff, and I appreciate your time.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Zener? Ms. Kahoon.
One.
Yes.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning.
I appreciate all the work the staff has done. At the workshop that the board had, there was a section in there about future rezonings and different things. Just for the record, is that section still in this UDO?
So I think you're referring to the memo we provided for your workshop.
Correct.
And those future actions had not yet occurred. They were future considerations for the town, and they're not currently addressed in the UDO.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted that on the record. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Michael.
Thank you.
All right. Would anybody care to comment on the proposed UDO? Any member of the public?
I'd just say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's got to remember this is a living, breathing document. There is no beginning, there is no end, and that there will constantly be changes. I mean, we're not doing any, if we do something, we're not doing anything that puts stuff in a final form. It's always a continuing, living document.
Yes.
If anybody thinks we're adopting something that's not going to change, I don't think we're.
Properly, and that's part of adopting the, going from the old one to the UDO. I think if you're, I think if you're a smart town, every document should be, to some degree, a living document because you want to address, we have conditions that arise that we didn't foresee, and they need to be addressed as we, as we can. So you're exactly right.
That's a very good point. Any, any other, does the board wish to receive any other information about the UDO before you begin deliberations? All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may consider the ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Nag's Head in order to adopt the UDO.
Can we get perhaps a motion on the floor and then discussion?
I'd suggest that the appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Nag's Head.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Just want to clarify, as presented to us in our package?
Yes, sir. That's right.
That's correct. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing none, all those hearing the motion, having a motion and a second, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
May I ask a further question?
Yes, ma'am.
We've adopted the focus. We've adopted the UDO. Where are we with getting our land use plan approved on the state level?
Thank you. Good question.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. It's been tedious. We had about 51 comments or questions for clarification from KAMA, and some of those responses, we've needed to go to the state, certain departments, several departments, to ask for additional information. I think there are probably less than five responses that we're waiting on additional information for to complete that response. I'm hopeful that we can submit it within the few, next few weeks, and we'll copy the board on our response. Some of those responses do require, KAMA's requested us to make edits and changes to our comprehensive plan in response to those comments, and we'll submit those both to you and to KAMA as part of that.
I hope that any of the questions or comments that were reflected do not change our values. That document is a Nag's Head living value, not a KAMA living value.
I completely agree, and in some cases, we've suggested that the information provided in the plan provided in the plan is sufficient to address the completeness, um, requirement that KAMA has, and hopefully, um, they will agree. The reviewer will agree, and we don't need to provide any changes that would perhaps, um, be inconsistent with, with what the commissioner just said.
I would hope that this board would express its view that our values are already expressed in the documents and don't need changes.
I'm happy to, to take those words and reiterate that.
That's me saying that, but I think once the board adopted it, that was our value.
I agree.
Agree.
That's staff's understanding as well.
And I don't think a staff person should necessarily, um, disagree with our values on the state level.
Well, even if they disagree, if it's an expressed value and there's no regulatory reason for changing your value, then no.
That is correct.
Yes, right. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I do apologize for the delay. It's been cumbersome.
Thank you. The, um, next item on our agenda would be reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director, uh, consideration of request for a beach access grant.
Morning, Mayor and Board. I'm happy to report that the town has been invited back, um, to submit a final application for the Islington Street Public Beach Access through the Division of Coastal Management. We were one of 14 local communities invited back for a final, um, application, and the pre-applications at this time total $2.4 million in grant requests. Um, there are approximately 1, 1 million in grant funds available. Uh, our deadline is September the 6th, um, that we would be submitting this final application. We would be notified by October if we were, um, a recipient of the final, um, grant, and , uh, award letters will go out in September. Our, uh, contract would be potentially executed in November, and this would be for, um, improvement of a parking lot, um, connection to an existing beach crossover, shower, bike rack, lighting signage, and also stormwater improvements. It is noted that we have to, um, open up for, uh, public, any public comment on this grant as a prerequisite of submitting a final grant application.
Thank you. Holly, the, um, the lighting, is this, um, the sewer lighting would be something, um, one or more light fixtures like the ones we've been using on the crosswalks recently?
I am unsure. I'd have to...
Okay.
Okay, yes. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. And I appreciate seeing that we're making that switch, um, and relying less on the utility, um, since those fixtures have become so widely available and are relatively economical. So, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, then a, uh, motion to approve the request to, for application would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the application for the waterfront access grant. Any further discussion?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but I think as part of the final grant application, we have to give the opportunity for the public to make comment on, in order to submit for the final part of the requirement is that we give the, um, a moment for the public to comment if needed.
So we'll, can we schedule that for the September meeting?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, so we can, so we can do that. So that is the, is the motion to approve today in order, or?
I'm sorry, we can do it right now.
We can?
Yes.
Okay.
We advertise as?
Did we advertise it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not required to be of official public hearing. It's just an opportunity for public comment.
We can do.
Did we advertise the opportunity for public comment? Not a public hearing, but public comment? Was it?
What, what's the deadline again?
September the 6th.
Wow.
Okay, we can do it. The 4th is the meeting?
Yeah.
We can do it on the 4th.
I, I would be more comfortable with that, I think.
Typically, I think this is the procedure we followed in, in the past, but just to make sure that the comment was clear. I mean, when, when it's presented on the agenda, it's presented with the intent for comment.
Okay.
But we need to make it, we need to make it clear when we have time.
Yeah, I know. And, and, um, in the interest of serving those residents in South Naggs Head and giving them an opportunity to comment if they wish, we have...
I was just, may I make a suggestion that we go on and do it now, and then advertise and do it again on the 4th. Um, the point being, if we've done it now, I think we have satisfied the camera rules.
Mm-hmm.
May not satisfy our desire of public notice, but at least we know we've satisfied the camera rules, if we do it now.
I'm okay. I just, we always talk about transparency.
Right.
And we need to live up to transparency.
Yeah, I'm not saying not do it again, but...
So, so...
Just in case something happens.
So then, if we approve the, the motion for, which was to approve the application, and I believe I had a motion and a second, we would approve that, staff could finalize that and hold on to it until the next meeting, then we would have an advertised public comment period at the next meeting, and then a couple of days later, the submission would be, um, made and still be on time.
And, but I'd say go on and ask for it now. Here, what I'm trying to do is cover base, like, God forbid, we have a hurricane...
Right.
And our meeting get postponed a week.
That's an excellent point.
Um, so, we can, it, it doesn't do what we would like to do...
Right.
But it does check a box off, if we just do a public comment now.
Okay. Commissioner Walters?
Um, if we've always done it this way, and now, I understand the public comment, but we have a published agenda, we have a public comment, period. If, I think we, I think consistency is important, so, um, if this is what we're going to do in the future, then let's, you know, let's not end up back in this position.
We'll advertise more clearly.
That's correct.
Yes, I agree. And, and I would ask staff that we, we do that. And again, as Commissioner Kahun said, in the interest of greater transparency, there's no reason not to do that, Holly. So we have a motion to approve and a second on the floor with the understanding that there will be, also be a public comment period at our September meeting. So is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on their agenda is a report on building permit status. Uh, Michael will return to the podium.
Thank you. Um, coming to you to present, um, an update on the permitting status or the permitting process status, uh, for the planning and development department, and that incorporates inspections and enforcement as well. So I gave you a presentation, I believe, in, uh, April or May on the third quarter of FY 19, and now this is a presentation on the fourth quarter of that last fiscal year, uh, from April to June of this past year. So, some of the steps we've made to, um, improve processes, um, in the, in the department, uh, we have lowered the bi-weekly permit tracking benchmarks. Previously, I believe, uh, the turnaround time that we were hoping to hit was seven to 10 business days, uh, and that's been reduced now to five to seven business days. Basically, uh, I presented to you last time, every week, uh, we do send out at the beginning of the week and then the end of the week, an update about pending permit reviews, and, uh, that's color-coded to indicate, uh, where, uh, the reviews are, where each permit is in the review process in terms of whether or not it's been there for one or two days, or whether it's been there for longer than seven days. Uh, it gives staff some level of awareness about what is a priority. Uh, we focused on internal and external communication improvements. Perhaps one of the, the internal communication improvements we've made is, you know, making sure that our zoning administrator, uh, that's reviewing residential projects and our stormwater, uh, reviewer, uh, the engineering technician are communicating early on projects with applicants, but also with themselves, that they're doing pre-construction site inspections together when they're able, uh, that they're doing final inspections when they're able, and I think that's improved some of that process as well, and making sure that the applicants understood what the requirements are. Um, we've also, uh, begun monthly permitting inspections and enforcement team meetings. Um, we also have a separate planning and zoning and environmental planning, uh, team meeting, but I think this gives us an opportunity to have more focused discussion about permitting and inspections and enforcement, um, on a monthly basis. Uh, I think the board is aware we've increased fees consistent with those of adjacent communities and to offset cost of services to the town and to taxpayers. Uh, again, coordination of zoning, erosion and sediment control, stormwater pre and post-construction inspections, uh, and we've required final zoning and stormwater inspections prior to final building inspections. Oftentimes, we are finding, um, that a final inspection will be called in, uh, an applicant or property owner would believe that the building inspection was the only thing that they needed to concentrate on, and there was a lack of focus on zoning and stormwater requirements. So, uh, requiring those earlier, um, I think has improved compliance and, and completion of projects, um, prior to CO. And then our code enforcement officer, Ed Snyder, has received his probation, probationary building inspection certificate, which does allow him to assist our, um, primary inspectors and chief building inspector on occasion. So I think that's been helpful as well. Um, next steps moving forward, and admittedly, some of these were on the previous report. It's been, um, a matter of prioritizing, uh, certain, uh, changes. We need to continue to improve Munis reporting, uh, forms, current owner information. We're actually working now to schedule some additional training, uh, provided by Tyler, who, who operates the Munis software. Uh, again, taking advantage of Munis training opportunities. As part of the adoption of the UDO, uh, we're going to be doing a better job of documenting and improving our permitting workflows. We have to develop, um, a development manual as part of the UDO. Um, we still want to create separate review processes for less complicated permits and work, uh, streamline some of the permitting for, uh, projects that may be, for instance, changing out a roof that maybe should require less review time, if not any review time. Um, as part of the adoption of the UDO and the development manual, we do want to plan workshops this fall, September, October, uh, for home builders, real estate association, residents. Uh, I'm envisioning at least two, if not three, such workshops. And then we do still want to roll out online, uh, trade permitting, um, and we're hopeful to get a, uh, workstation available, open to the public out in the lobby of the department, uh, that people can pull up information they may need that they didn't have before they got into the office, uh, that they don't have to leave the office to be able to get that information. Uh, but also, um, we want to make sure that the trade permitting, that staff is ready to receive online permitting, uh, before we roll that out publicly. So, um, this was third quarter. Uh, our average, uh, permit turnaround review time was 8.89 days. Uh, the orange, um, line on the graph is the number of permit applications received in any, in the week of the fiscal year, uh, in the 13 weeks, and then the blue line is the review time. So obviously, at the beginning of the, uh, the quarter, this was January, this is when Munis was being rolled out, where we were transitioning. So the review times were obviously considerably longer than we had hoped, but those quickly dropped off into the final week of, uh, the quarter, down to an average of five review days. Um, the fourth quarter, considerably better. We're averaging 5.1, uh, days for turnaround of permits for review time. Uh, you know, going from 8.89 down to 5.1, I think is a huge improvement, uh, and I think is, um, probably more consistent with how the department usually operates. But I think hopefully, um, we're seeing the benefit of some of, um, the changes we've instituted as well. Um, the board asked at the last meeting, and maybe, um, we can break this down further, but I think the board wanted some, um, idea about separating out permits by type. Uh, so I've shown you here what, um, the number of residential projects versus commercial projects and the average, um, turnaround for those projects. So, in the fourth quarter, residential projects, it was approximately 4.97 days, um, for permit turnaround versus, uh, 5.38 days for commercial projects. So not much of a difference. Um, you, you do see more of a difference in the third quarter, but, um, you know, from a volume perspective, um, commercial projects are not nearly as, um, frequent as residential projects. Uh, they can be more complex depending on whether or not there's a conditional use permit or site plan review involved, or, um, something of that nature. So, happy to answer any questions, um, give you any further thoughts about things that can we, we can do.
Okay. All right. Board members?
Michael, what's the percentage that you're actually using this new modular? How much we have left to use that we are not using?
You mean for, for Munis? You know, I, I had it in the previous community I was in. I, I would say we use it probably, we use more of it than, than, than the community I was in before. Uh, the staff, um, is really coming up to speed with it. I would say Ed Snyder, the code, our code enforcement officer is the one who is our guinea pig and really does a lot testing it, and he really has helped the other inspectors and, and staff come along in using the field module, which we did not use in our, in the previous community I was with. And I think it's really good that the town is supportive of, um, all the inspectors and staff having tablets, that they can use that in the field. I think, um, you know, some of the reporting function, uh, I think is important. I think the online, um, application function is probably, uh, the biggest piece that we're not using right now. And I think it's, I've talked to our permit technician, um, about going to Currituck County to, to see how they use it, and to see if they can glean any, uh, ideas for improving the use of it, because they have the same software. And I think they're going to try to go, uh, do that in, in the next month or so, and see if they can pick up any tips and tricks.
So, an applicant can't go online and find out where their permit is in the process currently?
So they actually, we've set up notifications where there are certain, um, milestones where if I'm the system staff and I trigger something, they'd get an automatic email if we have their email. So they can't, uh, go into the system to do that, but if the review's complete or an inspection is complete, they do get an email notification to that effect today.
Sure. So as we move forward, that will occur, that somebody can go online and track their permit?
I believe that, that is the case. I think the software does allow for that.
And will we have that available in, by the end of this quarter, or at least by the end of the year?
I'm happy to get back to you. I don't know if I can commit to you right now. Um, I can tell you that I hope at the end of this quarter, we will allow someone to submit a trade permit online, but I, I, without knowing, um, how much more we need to do in terms of online tracking, I'd, I'd happy to, I'm happy to get back to you.
Okay.
I don't want to give you an answer. I can't.
I just think we're all anxious to go ahead and get this fully integrated.
But, starting with the trade permits, I, I do believe is the way that Currituck County started. They started with smaller permits and, and got, figured out how to make the online permitting work, and then they ramped up from there to the, to the bigger projects. Um, a couple of things. Um, I was not aware that Ed was working on his building permit certification, and that's a nice benefit for the town to have, to have somebody else to, can do those kinds of inspections. So appreciation to, to Ed from, from us, certainly. Um, the other thing is, in the, um, in the educational process on the UDO that we adopted earlier, um, there needs to be some level of outreach to our business community, and I'm thinking about the housing component primarily. Um, we have, one of the changes, we made several changes that make it possible for businesses to construct various forms of residential on commercial properties. Um, we had the residential-commercial mixed use, which we've had on the books for years, but it had to be in a single building. Now it can be in separate buildings, which means you could build a residential structure on a commercial site and sprinkler only that part and not have to sprinkler your business. But they'll need wastewater. Um, a lot of businesses don't use as much wastewater as their permit was for. In other words, a lot of times, is it, when you go back to do a renovation or an addition or something, you go pull the original permit, you see what they were permitted for, you look at their water bills for five years, and you see that they're using less, which means they have capacity in the system that's already in the ground. means they have capacity in the system that's already in the ground. So what we're going to find after the adoption of the UDO was that some of our businesses who have a housing problem can put housing on their sites in some form. And I think having those businesses be aware of that, and perhaps having the health department, somebody from the health department also be part of those training sessions might be helpful down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walters?
Never want to say anything bad with good news. So I consider this all really good news. I would just piggyback on Commissioner Cahoon and further encourage us to move a little bit quicker. I think most of the clients, if you will, or lack of a better word, that will be using this system pretty much are already familiar with it. So it's us that's not familiar with it. It's not the users. I mean, because they've been using it in other places. So I just encourage us to move faster as well.
Great. I'm happy to give you a better, I'll work through the town manager, give you a better idea about timeline. Yes, ma'am?
And I'm really happy, thank you, the way things have progressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Let's get through one more, one more item before we take a short break. This would be old business from previous meetings, a discussion of the crosswalks in the town pedestrian plan. Andy?
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. So last month, Commissioner Cahoon brought up an issue regarding crosswalks on NC-12, and we were asked to look at the pedestrian plan and any other guidance that we have for areas where we might have gaps, where crosswalks might be needed. I think specifically, Commissioner Cahoon was targeting the area south of the Village of Nagseth, essentially from Forest Street south to Whalebone. So we did go and look at the pedestrian plan. The pedestrian plan actually did not have much guidance on NC-12 in terms of locations where crosswalks were needed. It tended to focus on US-158. It had some design standards that are useful, but nothing that actually recommended locations. So just looking at the previous practices we utilize, we were looking for areas where there's a side street that aligns with a beach access, and areas where we have large gaps. And we did a map, we put it in your packet, which basically shows that area in question. This is the Forest Street Beach Access, and then here's Jeanette's Pier. And so here I've got the, well, here's the town beach access is labeled. And we currently have a gap between Forest Street and I believe the First Colony Inn, where there's...
That's a private crosswalk.
The...
To the beach.
The Pebble Beach?
No, the First Colony Inn, that you mentioned.
Right. I was just suggesting that the, there is a crosswalk on NC-12 at that location, at First Colony. So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So just looking at the separation there, there is a gap of probably about 1,600 feet between those two locations. At Forbes Street, there is actually a private homeowners' association walkover that connects to the multi-use path in that location, that several of the residences in that area utilize to access the beach. Since that would close a gap in existing crosswalks, staff is suggesting that that is a potential location for a new crosswalk at that location. We also looked at Grau Street, which, there is no crosswalk currently at that location, but there is a beach access, a town beach access there that's unimproved, but there is a sand pathway. There's also a gap in that location between the First Colony Inn and I believe it's Glidden Street. And so we identified that as an area where we could potentially add a crosswalk to help close a gap and align with the beach access. Further south from there, we do have what we feel like are sufficient crosswalks. There's Glidden, and there's Gull Street and Gray Eagle, and then certainly Jeanette's Pier. So just, just looking at this really basic analysis, we identified two locations we think the board may want to consider for crosswalks, and we would suggest moving forward with those, and we would certainly appreciate any feedback that the board can provide.
My comment would be, you need to have it areas where there are numerous rental properties. The First Colony Inn is a great one, but it only takes people from the hotel to a private access. You would need to have it at a street intersection somewhere, where you have numbers of people coming down the side street trying to get to the path.
Right. The one at the First Colony is already there. The crosswalk is already there.
Right, but it's pretty much a private.
It is.
It's private.
I mean, it takes you from private property to private property.
Correct. And the last thing we need to do is encourage trespassing.
Yeah.
We have enough of that at all our locations.
Understood.
Commissioner Sears?
You didn't focus anywhere else in town, just these two beach accesses you're recommending?
Yeah, we primarily focused on what was brought up last month by the board, and we could certainly look at other areas, but this was identified as an area where there are existing gaps, and so we did look at this area only.
You have a huge amount of traffic down from the west side, where we have that neighborhood. The best location I can give you is it comes out by Scammles. That's my, that's my reference point.
Right.
Because that's where the Old Street, is it Old Street?
Yeah.
Old Street comes across there. There's no access point through there.
And that's, that's actually Forbes Street where Scammles is, and that's what we were suggesting adding a location there.
Yeah, that's one that seems to be really busy. We have often a lot of businesses on the 158 as well that people are traversing.
Right, and then we looked at that location, and then we also looked at Grau Street as being the two that we would add.
That makes sense to me, to fill in the gap.
Let's keep looking at these and lighting them at the same time, you know? I think that's, I think the lighting's been beneficial.
Sure.
Commissioner Walters?
Agree.
Commissioner Fuller?
Agree. I mean, are we going to ask for crosswalks at Forbes Street and Grass Street? Is that what we're doing? Or are we just identifying things? That's my question.
We would suggest you direct us to ask for them.
That's what I would like to do.
We have to ask DOT.
I mean, that's what I would like to do.
Okay.
Just generally, talking to other staff, generally speaking, they've been given this, the ability to do this at beach accesses, and so we'll come coordinate with them, and then we would go ahead and make the improvements ourselves.
Okay. All right.
And continue to identify spots throughout town where we have an awful lot of pedestrian traffic trying to get across.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we can, it's 10 o'clock on the dot, so let's take about a 10-minute recess. Okay, the board will return to order. The next item on our agenda is item H2 from the July 3 board meeting, a discussion of the town manager review process. I believe I will call on Commissioner Fuller, actually, to frame this discussion. Or am I calling on a clip?
I'll be happy to.
Okay. Go for it. Commissioner Fuller?
Well, just briefly, what I suggested was that the contract with the manager terminates in October. He was in a two-year contract, and by contract, we have to review him in September. And my value and what I would like to request is that the board do basically allow for the attorney to coordinate that review process. And the reason being is, I think it allows for the mayor to free himself up as to be one of the equals in terms of the review, instead of having to also coordinate the board. He's an equal among the five of us, which I think should be in the review process. And second, I would like that the process, instead of being a total aggregate score, that it be individually scored, and that we all share our individual scores among ourselves so we can discuss why we give the managers the scores we give. I think that would be a better opportunity for us to understand among ourselves what we see as the positives and negatives, and discuss those appropriately with the manager. The other part would be, hopefully, we could get a review, the review form within the next week or two weeks, have it for two weeks, turn it in, so it could be compiled by the attorney before September, and then have the review sometime in September. There could be coordinated between a board meeting, or a retreat, or in between, or I don't really care. We just need to do it in September. So that's generally my proposal.
Before I open it up to board discussion, let me ask Mr. Leidy, or anyone, have there been discussions with Attorney Leidy about readiness and willingness to conduct this process, and whether two weeks is adequate time for you to do what you need to do?
Yes, sir. We, we're certainly willing to do it. We do this for a variety of our public body clients, and two-week turnaround is sufficient. The real, it takes about a day, once we have all of the forms in, to compile the results. And so the board, there's five members of the board, so that's not that larger group. That makes it fairly easy to go ahead and get it done pretty quickly, once we have them all in. The problem we've encountered in the past has been when people don't turn in their forms, not saying this board, but other boards. And sometimes when you, when you have, sometimes it takes a two-meeting cycle to issue the, to send out the forms, get the majority of them back, do a reminder at the meeting that we still need forms from people, and then to get those before, you know, we end up having the compilation and then the meeting to discuss that. A lot, a lot of clients take two meetings to get that all done. Given the size of the board here, I don't think that that's likely to be a problem. The other thing that we do, and one, and just to sort of echo what Commissioner Fuller was saying, when we, when we create the matrix that we use, what we, the way we've done it is, when you have a grading scale of, say, one through five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, I have recommended that we use this matrix approach in the past for others, because if you get three fives and two ones, an overall average score of 3.2 doesn't tell you about the difference in view of performance. So I think that really helps illustrate that three people feel very strongly about this, and two people feel strongly in the other direction. So that's one reason why I think using a completely detailed matrix is useful. We also, when we do this, we also repeat all the, we encourage comments for all ratings. I also recommend that for any rating of a, at the lowest end of the scale, that your form require comments to help illustrate or explain why that rating has been given. But in our, in our compilation, we also repeat verbatim all the comments that have been received under each category, as well as any of the overall comments. So, which end up getting back as a fairly detailed snapshot of all the information provided by all the folks who've participated in the, in the evaluation process. I think the key thing for, for everyone involved in the process is to make sure that everyone's on the same page about what the instrument's going to look like, what the scale is going to look like, and, you know, how everyone wants those results to be presented back to the, to the board. And that's all entirely up to the board to decide how you want to do those things.
Okay. I'll save my questions for, for later. Commissioner Fuller, anything else to add to that discussion?
I agree with everything the attorney said. It's very similar to the approach that the town used historically in the past. I don't know about the last few years. I do know it was the approach that was used a few years ago, and I thought it was a very good approach.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
It is not the, what we have done in the last few years. It has been compiled by the mayor, which does not incur additional legal expense for the board and our citizens, and it is a, an average number on every question on the evaluation form, because I believe that that, that is the true number that belongs to each, each question on the evaluation, because we function as a board. We don't function as individuals. Historically, the town may have used that, and historically, I'm familiar with that instrument, because I served on the Board of Education, and we use the same form and the same attorney. We didn't, they were not used for superintendent evaluations. It was used in an instance where we had to appoint a new board member, and we did interviews, and we used the matrix system. There was a board member that had wanted a specific outcome, and it didn't turn out that way, so he chose to take that document that was shared with everybody on the board and have it published in the newspaper. So I am really not a fan of that. I prefer an overall average score for each question on the evaluation form, which you created this year. You weren't happy with the last one, so you had the opportunity to create that.
The board created it. I proposed it.
Well, I think you, didn't you present it to the mayor?
No, the, the mayor and I were jointly tasked with doing it, and we jointly did it together.
Okay. All right, well, and the board approved it?
Right.
So the form we have is the one that the board has approved. Additionally, there are, the only thing that, to me, the only thing that matters in any of our decisions is the board decision, not the individual preferences. And, you know, you may have a pet peeve that just goes through you, and on a specific item, you're going to rate according to your pet peeve, which may not be board action. So I'm personally not a fan of the matrix and sharing that with every single individual. My experience has been, and this is just my personal experience, it leads to personal attacks within the board of, well, why did you give him that? Or why did you give her that? Or, you know, I disagree with you. And so I think the overall average score, which is truly the relevant score anyway, and that's what should go in the personnel file of the manager, of whomever you're evaluating at that time, not a grid of he likes, she likes, he doesn't, she doesn't. That's been my personal experience, and hence my view on the matter.
Thank you. Before I pass it down, I do, I have what I think is a technical question. The board approved the form several months ago, which has the questions, and then has a series of numbers for rating, and then I believe it has a comment period section at the bottom of that form. I heard a reference to comments on every rating, and our form is not currently set up for that.
Well, if it's not, that's okay. I just, when I, and I haven't looked at this particular evaluation form, but when I've been involved in preparing them before, I've always felt that that was a useful thing to do. So if you're, if you're inclined to make any changes to it now or in the future, that's one of the things I think is useful.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
I've done forms also different ways and been part of them. I actually like a matrix, and when you talk about comments, I've always felt free to make comments on any question that I felt deserved to comment. I don't think I should be, or any board member should be inhibited by a numerical score if there are specific comments that need to be made, positive and negative. And it can be some of each. I do like sharing and board members talking as part of the evaluation process when the scores are done, when they're turned in, and I think it encourages more free conversation to have a matrix, because then board members can say, okay, what was your thought process with this versus just an aggregate score? The aggregate score is going to pop up at the end of any evaluation, whether you use a matrix, or whether you use just an average, or whatever. It's all going to flesh out, but I think it's healthier in some ways to have a matrix. So it encourages board members to ask questions and try to understand one another, instead of maybe getting entrenched. That's my thought. That's my thought.
Mr. Sears?
My stand on this is I think that we need to do what's best for the community in the whole and if that is having a matrix and getting it all out on the table, figuring out how we can be the best town we can be, then that's the way we need to go.
We don't have a motion on the floor, so there would need to be a motion. One, we're not modifying the, the form that we've approved, as I understand it. So the motion would be to delegate the compilation of the review to the attorney and that the attorney would put the scores into a matrix for, as part of his report back to the board. Is that accurate?
Accurate. May I ask a question?
Yes.
We did not do a review in March, as we said we were going to do. So my question is, the review is for the entire year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought on our board retreat in January because there was no evaluation form, that we could only evaluate from the time we adopted the new evaluation form because the manager would have no idea what we're evaluating come on. I believe that's in our minutes from our January retreat. I just want clarification. Either way is fine, but... We adopted this, this form in March, the new evaluation form.
So I'll ask the attorney.
My, my, again, without looking at the form, I'll just sort of give you a general answer. I think if the form has specific kinds of criteria in it that you're going to be evaluating the, the employee about, it's, it's only fair to evaluate from the time that those criteria were provided to the employee coming forward. If it's a rule, if it's a more generic, you know, type of, of form where it would not seem unfair to say, we're going to evaluate you based on these kinds of characteristics or criteria, then I don't think it matters. But it's the same thing as, I put it this way, if, if, if the evaluation instrument is almost a measurement or an assessment toward the achievement of certain goals, it's only fair to evaluate someone from the time those goals were assigned, if you understand what I'm getting at.
So it's a mixed bag?
I'm sorry?
So it's a mixed bag?
Yeah. Well, I think for, and I looked at the form again, my, my recollection is that most of the question, that the form did not establish, I don't recall establishing specific goals, that you would achieve X number of things by a certain date and that there's not that. It's, it's on all of the standard performance criteria of a manager.
I, I, my value is that the evaluation form does not go after goals. What the evaluation form does is allow us to review the manager and then to establish those goals based on the review. That's, that's what I think would happen.
Well, and in part, I mean, all, all of this also is about education of the manager and helping the manager understand where the board sees the manager to be and what things the manager needs to be addressing from the board's point of view.
I completely agree. I think, I think it's important to approach an evaluation as a growth assessment and an opportunity so that someone is given feedback on how they're doing on certain things without it being a gotcha kind of exercise, obviously. The public education system has been very, has been very clear that that's what the process is about, is about providing a, an assessment on how someone's doing and giving them an opportunity for growth. And so I think that's, I think that's a good philosophy for an evaluation process. So I think if you, I mean, I think it's good for the board to be all on the same page about how you're going to do it so that the results are, are, can be compared from one, one raider to the next. But if you can't agree on that, then I think it's important to be able to discuss that when you do, when you discuss the results. So that if somebody gives a one on a certain thing and their explanation is, well, I feel that earlier in the year we didn't get this, that, or this, and someone feels that that's because no one had made it clear that we expected those kinds of things at that stage, but now we do, and I think since then we've had better progress, that's a dialogue the board has to have with itself to come to an understanding of why there's a difference in, in those ratings. That's just, I mean, again, that's part of the process. But I think that the, I, I think it's important that y'all try to be, to, to use a consistent approach to how you're going to do the evaluation so that the results are not just apples and oranges as between each person.
Well, the board has adopted a evaluation form and so we, so we need to use it. And so for, for this round of evaluation. And so I'm going to ask if there's, if someone can concoct a motion for us here.
Well, I'll do it. I'll, I'll make a motion that we request the attorney to lead the evaluation process for the board, that a matrix be created that shows individual scores, the document be sent out sometime this month with a turnaround time of two weeks. That two weeks should be before September 1st and that we set a date for the review to be determined. Sometime in September.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Only that we set the date in September quickly because our September calendars are filling rapidly. We have a retreat in September. For myself, I know I have CRC in September, so...
And see, and, and I agree. I mean, my point is, I don't know if we want to do it with the meeting or with the retreat or in between or everybody's calendar is different and that's why I didn't want to say a certain date.
If I may suggest, the retreat agenda is not heavy. We're all already booked for that. I believe we had perhaps asked Mr. Lyde to be available for that retreat.
When, when is the retreat?
The 12th.
I will not be, I will not be here for the, for the 12th.
Okay. Then that's problematic, obviously. Then, then I would say, we have the motion and second on the floor to the point of discussion that Commissioner Cahoon offered between the attorney and staff, if you would offer dates for us to, to do the evaluation.
I will be here for the mid-month, if there's a mid-month. I have that on my calendar already.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Cahoon won't. So again, let's have the attorney and staff determine a date.
Can we not make this happen by our regular board meeting, which is when we typically do this anyway?
I will not be here for the regular meeting on the, on the 4th.
The 4th probably might not be.
I had plenty of days that he would not be there, so yes.
Okay. All right. There would need to be a closed session as part of that meeting, yes.
Yes. Whatever the meeting is, you need to have a closed session to discuss the results.
Yes.
So looking at dates, if not September, would it, would we, if we're not going to have a mid-month September, then does it not automatically become the first meeting in October unless you advertise a special meeting?
Does the contract not state that it has to be done in September?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it says September.
One alternative is at the end of the regular meeting, the, the meeting on the 4th, to recess, not to the mid, to a, to a mid-month on a different day that, that...
Is the 11th available to, to you?
No. I'm going to be gone from the 2nd through the 13th.
Nice vacation, John.
Yeah. Most of it's in transit.
I'm sorry, 2nd through the...
13th, yeah. During that critical part.
And then you're...
Then I'm back. I'll be back on the 13th.
But you're, so you're available on the 18th?
Yes.
That's the mid-month day, but you're not.
I have CRC, I'm sorry.
Are you available on, on the, well, let's go to the 25th.
I'm available on the 16th, I'm available on the 25th. Only two days, I'm not, are 17, 18, and partial 19. We'll see with, having to travel out.
Any of those, any other day and from the 16th through the 30th works for me.
Monday, the 16th? Board members?
I'm, I'm getting there.
Staff?
Serve at the pleasure of the board, I'll be there.
Michael? Okay. Monday, the 16th? 9:00 AM? I see head nodding. Monday, the 16th at 9:00 AM. So on the 4th, we will recess that meeting to, somebody help me remember to recess, please, to the 16th? Okay. So we have the motion and second on the floor. We've talked about a date. Any further discussion?
Just if he's leaving on the 2nd, do you need to get it to him before the 1st?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to get it before and I'll, you know, again, I usually have my paralegal do the actual grunt work on the crunching of the numbers, so that can be done at my absence. But it's nice to have it in advance so I can, so I know if we've not received all those instruments.
The form is complete, so there's no reason the form can't be issued to board members immediately.
Correct.
And then be back by mid-month. So let's, let's simply say, while we're looking at dates then, today being the 7th, that those would be in the board member hands... Today? Okay. So those will be in board member hands today and return those by Monday, the 19th? That gives you a couple of weekends.
And to the town clerk?
To the town clerk, who will then get them to the attorney.
By the 19th, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think we have all that. All right? Any further discussion? Motion and a second. I don't hear any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay?
Just the matrix.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I ask the attorney, as part of this, is it appropriate to bring up something as a part of this review process in closed session today when we go into closed session?
If it's not just about the process, but instead is about actual evaluation, performance, et cetera, et cetera, yes, it is. We just need to make sure we go into closed session for purchases of, to discuss personnel.
I will not bring up any.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for working through that. The next item on our review then would be new business. No, 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 I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes.
New business committee reports. Anyone have a committee? And then the, the change order will be next. Committee reports. Commissioner Cahoon? Commissioner Sears? I mean...
Do I have to change that much?
God knows. Sorry. Commissioner Fuller? Thank you. Then the next item would be the item we removed from the consent agenda, which was item E7, consideration of the change order for sand fencing. I see the town engineer moving to the podium.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. If, if you recall, the sand fence and sprigging portion of the beach nourishment project was separate and apart from the actual beach nourishment construction. This was headed up by town staff and this was put out to bid back in March of 2019 along with two additional rebids. The reason being is that we had only received a single bid, the, for the original bid and a single bid each subsequent bid. We had consulted with North Carolina Emergency Management along the way just to ensure that we were not only following statutory guidelines, but as well as federal procurement guidelines since this scope of work was identified as part of the public assistance grant from the Hurricane Matthew losses. So we wanted to make sure that we followed those procurement procedures to the T. Originally, when we estimated the cost of the project, we had allowed $165,000 for sand fencing to cover the 10-mile stretch along with $300,000 of sprigging, again, to cover the 10-mile-long project area. When we received the bids, the sprigging price, which was a unit price, was in line with what we had originally estimated. However, the sand fencing unit price was significantly higher than what we had originally estimated. When we received those bids, we then extracted the length of the project that it could serve and had come up with about six and a half miles of sand fencing that could be installed based upon the bids received. So our original intent was to cover the entire 10-mile length and so the change order request is to extend from the original allowance of $165,000 for an additional $107,000 for sand fencing to fill out the 10-mile project length. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have for that.
Commissioner Sears?
So we got that's five feet separation between each 10-foot section, correct?
10-foot separation.
10-foot separation.
That's correct.
So how many, so it's like a mile that we left off?
Based upon the original bid, we can cover about six and a half miles. So as it currently stands, that would cover from the southern project limits up to about Dove Street and so the northern project section would not be covered. So this change order would go ahead and fill out the remainder of that 10-mile project area all the way up through to Bonnet Street.
So how many miles is this 1,800 sections?
It's, it covers about three and a half miles when you go ahead and subtract out the public accesses as well as account for that 10-foot spacing between sections.
And why didn't we do it before? Why didn't we include that when we did the original bid?
Just because of the budgeted allowance that we had when, when we originally did this estimate, which dates back to 2017, we had looked at our historical pricing for sand fencing and it ranged in the low $30. And we had also looked at the Northern Beach project to see what they had, the bids that had been submitted for that project, that was about $40 per 10-foot section. And so we had come up with an estimate of $37 per 10-foot section as part of our original estimate. What we received was $56.
Okay.
And so, again, a significant increase that was unanticipated.
But why didn't we make the increase and change our request for proposal at the time that we set this out instead of coming back after we awarded a contract and added this in? Did there's some money come out of nowhere?
No. What, what we had was, we had an allowance for future years for sand fencing and sprigging, which we are pulling these funds from.
And why didn't we do that with the original bid?
Well, in the original bid, it was based upon a unit price. It was not based upon a lump sum contract. And so that gave us some flexibility depending upon that unit price to either add or subtract to that overall scope of work.
I guess the overall point is, why didn't we, why, why are we adjusting and reacting instead of planning for that at the time that we originally set forth to do the sprigging and the sand fencing?
We can't always pin down the exact price that we are going to receive for the scope of work.
Correct, but this is the fifty-six dollars that you got on the awarded contract, and we added to it after a contract was awarded. So, my point to that is, at the time, you knew you couldn't do this additional three miles, why didn't we rebid that additional three miles at that particular point? Why are we readjusting eight months or six months down the road for another hundred and five thousand?
Okay, when, when we put this out to bid, we had only received a single bid in the three times that we had advertised for. So, we had not received competitive bids, we received only a single bid. Based upon what we had originally budgeted, again, which was included in that public assistance grant, was three hundred thousand dollars for vegetative springing, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for sand fencing. And so, we could not arbitrarily increase that number at the time that we had received those bids. We have to follow the process.
Okay.
And that process is resulting in this change order, and the intent was to go ahead and cover the entire ten-mile project area. The bids did not permit us to go ahead and cover that. The bids only permitted us to do a portion of that, and so, we are coming back to you with this request to cover what was originally intended, which was to provide a comprehensive plan for sand fencing and springing along the ten-mile stretch.
So, you're bringing it back due to a process that needed to be followed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the question, the early answer I was looking for, why did we have to have this now instead of having it before? And that was the answer that we needed?
Commissioner, can you?
Question, just to clarify my mind, the original contract for sand fencing was a hundred and sixty-five thousand?
The, the original contract was four hundred-
Four hundred and sixty-four thousand, but that included-
Sand fencing and springing. We are only asking to adjust the sand fencing numbers, the springing, we are going to go with what had been submitted.
It looks like to me that that's a huge increase in the per unit, to do the three miles of a hundred and seven thousand dollars, based on what, how much of the original contract of four hundred and sixty-four was sand fencing and how much was springing? We don't know.
Amy, Amy, if you don't know, you may know, but Amy?
Right, okay, so the original contract allowance was three hundred thousand dollars for, for springing, and a hundred and sixty-five for sand fencing.
That's what I'm trying to get at, was a hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Right.
Okay.
That is correct.
For that, then that was for six and a half miles?
Right, which is the equivalent of two thousand nine hundred and forty-six ten-foot section panels.
Well, basically, about twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand is what I, that's what I aggregate per mile, but we're looking at a hundred, almost a hundred and eight thousand for three miles, so that's a huge increase in cost per mile to do three miles versus six and a half miles. My, am I making sense, or do my numbers work?
We're-
We're talking about a hundred and sixty-five for six and a half, now we're talking about a hundred and eight for three.
We are using the same unit price that was submitted in the bid for that original six and a half miles.
That just, that just didn't make sense to me, if it's a hundred and sixty-five for six and a hundred and eight for three and a half. Okay. The numbers just didn't add up in my mind.
Right. Commissioner Walters?
Well, that comes up to about twenty-seven, five per mile.
But, but there is some variability when you look at sand fencing, there are some sections that we are not going to cover, i.e., like in the historic district, and, and so, it's not an equal distribution along that ten-mile project length. There's also beach accesses, where we go ahead and skip those areas as well, there's a larger concentration there in the north end of town as compared to the south end of town, so. But, based upon the, the numbers that we have-
It's not, it's not a rational number of miles, and there's all these exceptions.
It's a project number of miles, but then there are a bunch of blanks in that.
Tons of exceptions, okay.
Right, there, there's a lot of variability whether it comes to the sand fencing numbers, as well as the springing, springing numbers as well. There will be a larger concentration of springing in the south end of the project, where the new dune is constructed, as opposed in the northern end, where we may have some spatial constraints, where we may do less rows, so.
We just need to have that in our stuff so we can avoid-
A diagram would have been helpful. Yes, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
But according to our, the finance officer comment, we have sufficient funds budgeted to cover this.
Correct.
And this is protecting a, if you look at the overall scope of the project, I mean, this is protecting our investment, so.
Yeah, it wasn't about not protecting, it's about why such a dramatic increase over the overall price and this late in the process, but it was a process that needed to be followed to get our grant money that was included in, and I just want a clarification on that.
And are we still waiting for grant, as an aside, grant money to be reimbursed?
We, we are making monthly reimbursement requests, and so, we are doing that to tenth of each month.
Right, I know we're making requests, last I saw, we were a couple of months behind.
We've made thirteen requests and been reimbursed for eleven.
Okay.
The fourteenth request will, will come Friday, but, but they're in communication with the state emergency management, who holds the funds to reimburse us with, their explanation is that they're just backlog, there's not a problem with the requests, but that's, that's the answer we got.
Yes, Commissioner Fuller?
I only have one stupid question, which is, the completion date is October twenty-fifth?
October eleventh. October, October eleventh is substantial completion.
In the final-
Final completion is October twenty-fifth.
Don't we normally plant beach grass late November and early December as the specific time? That's generally my understanding of when you're supposed to plant beach grass, so are we planting it too early?
No, what we are planting is sea oats, and sea oats, the planting window is from April-
It's sea, it's just sea oats?
That's correct.
But on the east side of the dune?
The sea oats are being planted on the, on the face of the dune, so they are being planted in back of the sand fencing, and we've got, I think that's eight-foot separation between the back of the sand fence and, and the sea oats. And so, this is a section of the sand fencing that has been installed so far to date. It commenced at Junko Street, which is up here, and is progressing southward. As it stands right now, they have gone up to about Proteus Street, which is down in South Naxet.
My only comment is, if that was approved by an appropriate horticulturist, I agree, I generally understand that usually on the face, it's more appropriate for beach grass, and from the top of the dune, in our case, westward, is more appropriate for sea grass, I mean, for sea oats. But if, but if it's an appropriate use of an appropriate material, I'm fine.
Yes, sir, it is an appropriate use for that type of perennial grass.
Is there a pattern of doing this consistent with the towns to the north that did the same kind of exercise of fencing and springing?
It is consistent with Division of Coastal Management guidelines, and it is also, we received approval through Marine Fisheries and Wildlife Resources for this.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Alright, thank you, Dave, appreciate that.
Thank you.
In that case, a motion would be in order to approve the proposed change order.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Should we, the next item on the agenda are items referred to in presentations from the town attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have is to request a closed session in order to discuss a matter with the board regarding, that's covered by the attorney-client privilege at the appropriate time.
Alright, thank you. It appears that we may be able to get through here and defer that to the end?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, great, thank you. That would make the next item on the agenda K one, consideration of an amendment to the traffic control map.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of the success of the events at Doughty Park, we are starting to see increased problems and issues with the traffic, and particularly with parking around the area. Most recently, the farmer's market, we saw parking on both sides of Wrightsville between Bonnet Street and entrance to Nagset Elementary, currently on Bonnet, and also on Bonnet Street, but currently we have no parking on the south side of Bonnet Street. At this time, what we're requesting is for approval to amend the traffic control map to, to put no parking signs from Bonnet Street to the entrance to Nagset Elementary on the west side of Wrightsville. What we've seen is, in, in a couple of those events, it would be almost, well, very difficult, if not impossible, to get emergency response equipment through there. We think this is in stages, we looked at doing this more restrictive, but we feel like we could prohibit, if we could prohibit it on one side, that frees up more space to get emergency vehicles through and to keep traffic flowing. This is really a problem during the bigger events, it could potentially be an issue with the, you know, the first day of school sometimes, but there's a ditch along that red line, as you're well aware, if I'm not mistaken, at one of the last events, we actually had a car go in that ditch, and so, this is the request for that purpose. We, we try to put up no event parking signs, but of course, those aren't enforceable. We put those there at the, along the edge at the front door, we've put them in other places, but we feel like this, this is going to help us be able to get people to Nagset Elementary. It's usually all of us are, you know, the shortest distance between two points mainly, but we really need to get, you know, we have traffic on, or cars parked on both sides of the road and the parking lots empty, so we need to get people into Nagset Elementary. We've posted signs telling them additional traffic, parking is there, but this is the request.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you, have a motion as our second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented, any questions or kind of turn the board?
Do, do we feel that if we post no posts, no parking signs just on that side of the road, that we're forcing them to park in front of the residents on the other side of the road?
Yeah, they're, I don't, they do that now, and they're permitted to do that now, but it's already occurring that, that type of use of the right of ways is permitted. We look, I looked at this from the standpoint of, we could do this in steps or phases, if it continues to be a problem, then we could also post that side of the road. So, my suggestion is we continue to evaluate it, but regardless, they're, they've been parking there already. But we can certainly, if the board wishes, we can amend the resolution in front of you to include that portion now.
I, I think if, we don't want to push these folks in, in somebody's driveway, or edges somebody's driveway, when they're trying to exit their driveway, now they're blocked visionary to see down both sides of the road in an event situation, and if we're going to make a change, why don't we make a change thinking about the future as much as just dealing with the short-term situation or short resolution?
Thank you. Commissioner, can you?
If Commissioner Sears would like to ask for an amendment to my motion to do such, I'd be happy to honor that.
I mean, what's the board's thought on that? I mean, if we're going to put up four no posts, I mean, no parking signs on one side of the street, why don't we want to force them to those six driveways on the other side of the street?
Well, I've had a, I can't remember who I had this discussion with, because people park, yeah, sort of, they drive up and where they see parking, they, they have a tendency to park there immediately, and one of the things that we, I think, need to do is to, to try to move those people into the school parking lot, and whether that, you know, that probably requires us to put up a sign that's at least seasonal in terms of, you know, with an arrow that somehow gives direction for people to, to, to get there, and I, my preference, I, I don't, I don't really have a problem with expanding this to no parking on both sides, but I would ask that we accelerate the possibility of adding a sign that directs people into the, into the school parking lot, if we do that.
I, just to add, I think the original request that staff made is appropriate, because there is a significant ditch there. I mean, it drops quickly, and most people have vehicles that may be able to get all their wheels off of the pavement, but as the manager said, we've had, we've had more than one car go in that ditch on numerous occasions. On the west side of the road, there are people parking there, but the ditch is more of a swale-type thing, so they can get off easier. I, I do think it's a bother to those people that live there, most of those are rentals, except for Ms. Mundon, and then there's one that's right behind her that is a second home, and it does impair their vision coming out of the driveway, not Ms. Mundon, but the other, the other people, so I, I could see a reason to do it on both sides.
So, heard Commissioner Fuller, who made the motion, expressed willingness to accept a friendly amendment, are you, would you formally offer a friendly amendment to that?
Friendly amendment to adjust their-
Okay, to, to post no parking on both sides of the road for this same stretch? Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor of making both sides of the road no parking where the red line indicates, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have been approached by Carolina Marine Structures that has the contract to extend and repair the outfall, ocean outfall at McCall Court, which they've commenced now, they're in a contract with DOT. Back in two thousand and eleven, we, we, as part of the, the nourishment project at that time, we were going to extend and repair four of the outfalls that, including McCall Court, that were affected by the nourishment project. Because of increased costs, we weren't able to do McCall Court at that time, that left some material that the town purchased, and has an inventory now. Carolina Marine Structures has reached out to us to see about the possibility of using that. There's a process prescribed in the general statute for surplus in this equipment, and because it's considered small surplus, which is valued at less than thirty thousand dollars, we can negotiate a private sale with Carolina Marine Structures if the board authorizes us to do so. So, what we're asking is the ability to be able to sell twelve precast concrete collars, which really, the only use for these collars are for, for the ocean outfall, they were designed for that. Part of the process is that if you approve this, we have to advertise for ten days that we're doing so. You don't have to set an amount, but the, the, the amount that we have, excuse me, I'll look this up, I believe it's just over twenty-two thousand dollars, so, so you can give the authority to negotiate the price, or you can set a minimum, you'll accept. My recommendation would, the town would, I would propose that we would get what we got in them, their two thousand and eleven price will obviously be more advantageous than the two thousand and nineteen price, but if, if we don't sell these, then they're just going to continue to sit.
Six or seven more years, at least. So, yeah. Alright, thank you. Heard the request from the manager, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, and this is to authorize the disposition of the property that you heard described by the town manager. All those, any further discussion?
Yes, that's the price of twenty-two thousand, which was what we got in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is request for authorization to request a no-wake zone in the vicinity of Miller's Restaurant.
Yes, sir. As part of the condition, the conditional use permit, there's two that are being discussed at this time. One was the, number three, the condition, the applicant must receive approval for the verbiage of no-wake for 600 feet for the signage. The, the other is that, number six, that the no-wake zone and appropriate signage must be approved by the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries. What the applicant is requesting is that the town has to be a municipal agency or government agency, has to be the entity making the request for the no-wake sign, the no-wake zone. They're asking us to do that on their behalf. So, that's the first request. The, the, the other is that, and discussing this with the town attorney, the condition, the CUP states that the approval must be made by the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries. At some point, we need to amend that condition to Wildlife Resources as they're the agency that has jurisdiction. The, the thing that I'm asking also the board consider is that, the reason I think you put the no-wake zone, which would be the property lines extended 600 feet out into the sound, whether or not you would like to also ask that Wildlife Resources evaluate the Harvey site as part of that no-wake zone.
All right, thank you. It's been a little bit of discussion about this. Is there, is there a motion that someone's contemplating?
Think, and might take the attorney, but what I want to do is put this to bed if, if we can. And I think the easiest way to do that without making a substantive change to anything that we've already approved is that we, at this meeting, approve everything that we approved in the past, except eliminate that requirement that we put on them that stated Marine Fisheries when it should have been Wildlife Resources, and just remove that statement from what we approved. And that would be my motion. Now, the intent of that motion would be to approve the exact same thing. And then it's incumbent upon the town, if we see fit to ask Wildlife Resources to do something, then we would do that as another item. So, not, not force anything on Miller's. Just remove that section and let the town assume the responsibility of that.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney?
Well, I'm sorry, I just think we need to be clear on what, exactly what the motion is. Is the motion to remove the condition that was imposed as part of the CUP at the last meeting? I think that's what.
Correct, in that they couldn't do it anyway.
Right.
It's to remove a motion, part of a motion that they could not.
Right.
Accomplish. Then that effect is still the same, because they couldn't do it anyway.
Yeah, I think, I'm just trying to find the exact language, what, what that motion, what that condition was. Because my suggestion is going to be that the motion be to withdraw that specific condition.
That's what it was. It would be conditions three and six. Do we not have to go back through the process to amend the conditional use permit?
No.
There's no substantive change, we should not, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Not imposing any new conditions, so, and you're not modifying the condition, you're withdrawing the condition.
No.
That's what I'm trying to do, is do it so we can just put this to bed.
Right, and then it just becomes the town's issue, which is what it always was anyway.
Correct.
Right.
So, I think, yeah, so the motion is to withdraw the condition that the applicant obtain approval from the North Carolina Marine Fisheries of a no-wake zone and appropriate signage. If that's what the motion is.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? I hear none. So, we have a motion to remove that condition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. And then, I believe, the request is still on the table for staff to evaluate the appropriateness of no-wake zone in that area to the benefit of boaters and those users of the Harvey site and all of that activity in the area. Great, thank you.
Thank you. The, some other things that I'd just like to bring to the board's attention for your consideration. As the mayor mentioned, you have a retreat on September 12th. One of the purposes of that retreat is discussion of the pavement and conditioning study. Staffs evaluated this, and, and we have met with SEPI and another engineering firm who does pavement and conditioning studies. We're suggesting that we take the information that we've, we've gotten, the data, the report from Withers Rabinell, and we actually get the interpretation and the capital improvement plan reviewed and submitted by SEPI. So, that's one thing I didn't want you to be caught off guard by in moving towards the September retreat. We feel like we would be better served by having SEPI do this analysis of what we do now moving forward. They have, I think, more local experience.
And the money's available?
Yes.
In the Withers Rabinell budget to move it over to SEPI?
Correct.
So, are you proposing, well, we'll hack that September, never mind.
Also, that's something that I think the board needs to discuss sooner rather than later, is the maintenance and monitoring contract for the beach nourishment project. Monitoring likely won't, we won't do a survey likely until, for another year, so we have some time there. But we need to start discussing the maintenance plan and whether or not we're going to amend the maintenance plan. As you know, you have two municipal service districts. Future discussion of those municipal service districts, I think, are an inevitable part of the discussion is to, do we change the maintenance plan? Maintenance plan, as you well know, says that we'll re-nurse the beach after 50% is gone or six years, whichever's last. The issue that we've seen in, is that 50% of the hole is maybe too broad. And, and what I think the board needs to discuss is whether or not it's 50% of what? Is it 50% of a reach, 50% of the southern or the south MSD? Because you could have accretion in the north and lose it all in the south. But the south end is waiting for, to hit the 50% threshold while they don't have any beach. So, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss this at the September retreat, but we, we'll probably need to get out the bid sooner than later. So, you know, if there's time in the, or the agenda allows, we'd like to add that discussion.
And we've talked about obtaining a different consultant for that in the past, in previous meetings.
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Right now, there is no contract.
Right.
As well as future MSDs.
Yes, and MSDs. So, we can roll all that discussion together in the retreat. And remember that we will have an as-built survey when we get to the end of the job. It's just the maintenance survey that we're talking about that would happen a year away anyway.
In the event we were, were to have a storm that was declared, we could, we could contract separately for a one-off survey. Yes, sir. And as part of that discussion, we, we may also include the easements, which you well know expire in two years. The other thing I want to, I'll be bringing in a future meeting, not to the retreat, but a agenda. The community care clinic who leases the old Outer Banks Medical Center building off Health Center Drive. That lease expires at the end of this year. The original lease was signed January 14 for three years with one renewal for three years. So, that, and there are no more renewals. So, I'll be bringing that forward for your consideration. Two other things that, one, the, when we, if the last meeting, the board sent a letter to DOT requesting numerous things for them to evaluate, which, which they've done. And with a, with the belief or the intent, I think that we would, DOT would be here at the September meeting to report back to you. They have their DOT board meeting. They're not going to be, either Jerry Jennings or Alan Moran, neither one can be at the September board meeting. Is there, is there someone else from DOT that you may want to hear from? Or, you know, could we somehow do this at the September as part of the, the meeting with the review? Could we, you know, could we offer that and tag that somewhat together? I think it's important that they, that you meet with them because I feel like we're continuing to pass this, these issues back and forth without real resolve. Oh, you know, another suggestion would be that you, you meet two board members with them, you know, at another time.
Well, I would suggest on, on that front in particular, that there should be a conversation with, with Jerry Jennings and, and at a minimum with, with a couple of commissioners or with me and one of the commissioners. I, I don't think beyond that, that there's so much urgency to have that in September. That was what we said, but I think having them come in October at this point is probably just as well.
Okay, we'll, we'll try and make that, and maybe in the meantime, there could be discussion, but.
Mr. Fuller, you are going to say.
Well, I, I can wait to my time to say it, but, or I could say it now, just either, just a quick question.
Okay, then, one other thing. The, the tourist bureau heard the recommendation from the consultant for the future use of the event site. It's my understanding that, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Fuller can correct me, that there'll be a committee put together to evaluate that moving forward. I don't know if it's appropriate to recommend or ask that staff be a part of that from the consideration of the town code and ordinances. And my fear is that a recommendation is made that doesn't fit, and they may be put in the cart before the horse.
And I let that cart run on down the road.
Wait, before we go any further, the tourist bureau has not discussed anything about a committee.
Okay, that, that was my understanding from that, but I didn't know if it was, if that gets brought up at your next meeting, whether or not the board asks for a seat at that table.
Yeah, my concern would be that, you know, that they would continue down the road of a plan that doesn't recognize town values and town ordinances and comes in with a completed plan, or comes up with a completed plan that they, and then because they can't do it, we get painted either the bad guy or the good guy.
That's okay. I think we need to be very cautious about it being their plan, and we give our input when it's necessary. That's just my feeling.
That's, that's, that's pretty good.
And I, and I expect our next meeting will be the first, well, it will be the first discussion about what was presented because we received it, but there wasn't a lot of discussion.
Okay.
And there wasn't a committee for it.
And, and in the meantime, appropriately, Commissioner Fuller, as a member of that board, can carry the town's concerns forward about that.
The consultant already made the statement regarding our ordinances, that there would need to be negotiations on those. I think you made it pretty clear, we don't really.
I think that was answered.
I just gave him.
I believe they got an answer.
I just kind of gave them a historical perspective of Nagseth.
Yes, that's all that, thank you.
Indeed, okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the board of commissioners' agenda, so I will, I'll start at the other end. Commissioner Fuller?
Three things.
Okay.
Okay. One thing you didn't say about DOT that, I mean, I've, I've seen where DOT was going to repave the bypass this coming year, and now I understand they're not going to repave the bypass. Have you got any information that you can share with us about, are they or aren't they? And if they aren't, why aren't they? And then what are we doing with our joint projects, which I guess are some culverts and some road?
We don't have an official word. We've got unofficially from some DOT staff that that project has been kind of shelved. I, I don't know why, or I don't know, you know, what, if the money was pulled for something else. The, and, and my first concern was that we had three culverts that were going to be replaced as part of that project. And so, that kind of has taken staff back to the drawing board of, okay, if it's going to be an extended amount of time, we need these culverts replaced sooner rather than later. Can we partner with DOT in some other form or method to get these culverts replaced? But we haven't officially been given a word that, that's occurring, but it seems to be the case.
Yeah, I saw it in the paper too. That's why I want to know, because it was a surprise to me.
Yeah, well, then I apologize, I.
I don't know if the paper is correct.
Well, I think the paper is. It's just, we, like I said, we haven't received anything officially.
Add it to your list.
Sure.
Add it to your list.
Yes, I, I think some communication from, from me and perhaps the other mayors on the beach who would be affected by this to DOT would be appropriate. And I will talk to the mayors about that at our next meeting.
Second thing is, and I, we're coming up on the, on the board retreat. When do we get to place stuff on the agenda?
I think after this week and this meeting, that we are probably in a position to issue at least the list of the items that are on there and then ask, invite commissioners to add them, so.
Who is "we"?
Me, I've talked to the manager about the items that we, partially the list that you just heard, which was items that staff felt were hanging, that needed to be on that agenda. We knew the evaluation was somewhere possibly in the balance on that. And so, I think there is, I don't know if there's anything in addition to the list that the manager just ran through, but that can be put, you know, on a piece of paper or in an email and sent to all the commissioners.
We should be looking for something to ask us what we would like on the agenda by?
Certainly by the end of the week. We can do it today. Okay, all right.
And then the last thing, which is something that, that really concerns me. And I'm sorry at one level to see the, the escape room pulled out of Nagseth. But at another level, it gives me the opportunity to say something freely that I think is very important, which is, and I don't know if y'all saw it or not, but the escape room, as presented, didn't have sufficient parking. And their request was to do two things. One that met the ordinance, which was apply for a five bicycle parking space and eliminate a parking space, which the ordinance allows. My first real concern with that is, is that as a concerned person in the town and somebody that's very concerned about public safety, I would have had, I have a lot of issues with trying to encourage people to ride bicycles to places where we should not encourage people to ride bicycles. And I'm all for alternate transportation, but of any place in Nagseth that you shouldn't ride a bicycle to, it's that site. You know, it, it's just not conducive. And I don't think, I, I would like for us to look at our ordinances and still allow, maybe it's conditional use or something, to allow the elimination of parking space for bicycle parking, but only where the people could get there in a safe manner. And I hope I'm making myself clear. I, I had a real issue with that. The other thing I had an issue with, and that, and I wish planning staff had stayed, but there was also a request to reduce the parking. Not only to provide that bicycle parking, but there was a request to reduce the parking, of which both staff and the planning board unanimously recommended a reduction in parking. And I don't think we should be, especially staff, should be recommending a reduction in parking without reasons. It just doesn't make sense to me. I'm very sensitive that we have developed parking standards that have been thought through. They apply a lot, and I could use a number of things, and I'll just use one story, which I can do, but Kelly's no longer. I can do, but Kelly's is no longer here. But we do a parking standard based on a, on a national standard, if you will. And if Kelly's has people standing outside the line, but, outside the door, but they have the parking, proper parking, that's okay. You know, they don't have enough parking, but they do have enough parking, according to the standard. Where if another restaurant has an open parking lot and there's one car there, do they have too much parking? The answer is no, they don't have good food. So, you know, and so when we start reducing parking, and I've seen it time and time again, like with banks and certain things, where we've set ourselves up, where banks come in and go, we don't need all this parking you're requiring of us. Okay, now, what is happening to banks? They're closing regularly, and then you have somebody else come in and say, I want to do this, this, and this, I've got enough room, but I don't have enough parking. So what are you going to do about it? Well, the point is, we've set ourselves up by reducing parking standards, and I just don't think as a value of this town, and that would be one thing I'd really like to add to the agenda for the retreat, or things like that. I've got some other things, but, but things like that, it just doesn't make sense to me about how we are viewing and eliminating some of our parking.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me?
You got that for the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Walters?
Yeah, I was remiss in, when we had the presentation on the UDO. I'd just really like to thank every single person that served on the technical committee to, to get that process complete. It was a, it was a lengthy process. It took a lot of staff time, a lot of volunteer time, a lot of citizen input, and a special thank you to Holly White and the entire planning staff for getting that done. So I hopefully will send some letters to all of those people that served on that committee and thank them for their endless two years of work.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahill?
First, I'd like to thank everybody that came out last night for National Night Out. I thought we had pretty good attendance on a hot evening. I'd like to thank all the public safety staff that worked, all the town staff that worked, the ambulance EMS that came out, one of which I actually knew from a recent year. But I thought everybody did a really good job. I'm sorry that more people didn't attend, but I thought the kids that were there had a really good time, and I'd just like to say thank you. I think it was a good event. It seemed to be fairly well attended. The parking lot was pretty full, as well as parking down the Villa Dune, so thanks to everybody that came out and did, you know, participated. The next thing I have is I've had, I have a gentleman that comes in just about every day, and he doesn't say a whole lot, but this week he had a lot to say, and it was about tents, poles, been left in the right-of-way for so long that the grass is growing up between all the tent stakes in South Nags Head. And he said, Renee, when did we stop picking up? And I said, no, we still pick up. He said, well, these have been there so long, the grass has taken them over. So down in South Nags Head, we need to take a look at that. I know we pick them up off the beach, but there are some homeowners that actually do take them out and put them out beside the garbage cans or out by the street, and we need to kind of take a look at that, about getting them out of the right-of-way sooner before we have to weed it around them.
May I add on to that? There are also some places where there's been brush put out. I know not legally, but brush been put out that's been there over two months? Do we not pick it up? I guess is the question.
We issue notices of violation outside of the period of time that it's not supposed to be there, but it shouldn't be there two months. It reaches a point where if they're not, we can do it and bill accordingly, but from this time of year, as the board knows, we're not picking up bulk in the right-of-way. We're issuing NOVs for that. But like I said, obviously, it's something that's set two months, we need to enforce stronger.
Well, and I agree with the NOV, but at some point, if it's not effective, do we just leave it and say, well, we've issued a NOV and we're not going to move it ever again? And that's, I don't think that's our philosophy.
No, they need to be picked up. Someday, as an architect, I'm going to collect a whole bunch of those, and I'm going to figure out how to build something out of all those. Because there's enough of them thrown away. I could build something pretty substantial, I think.
Oh, I guarantee you could.
Tent frame parks. There must be hundreds of them thrown away.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'd just like to shadow Susie's comments about the UDO and everybody that volunteered on that.
Thank you. From, from my agenda, the board has seen, there was an email regarding the village and the request for rollback service, and since there will be some discussion on the retreat agenda, I would defer that, if I may, that we would talk about those issues at the, during the retreat. This would seem to be the most appropriate time to spend a few minutes on that, and to figure out, you know, what, what might be done. Is there other business to come before the board?
The census thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, the census. I'm sorry. Michael Zainer has been appointed as the town's representative, the air planning director for the, for the census committee. I believe the county had appointed their planner to, as their representative, and so Michael Michael has consented and will be representing the town in that. Seems like the right person. So that brings us to other business. Is there any other business to come before us that's not on the agenda? All right, now we're ready for closed session then. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, the board needs to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3 in order to confer with the town attorney regarding a matter within the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege.
Okay, a motion to that order would be in a, motion would be appropriate? So moved, a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the board will be in closed session. Okay, the board has returned from closed session. I'll ask Attorney Leidy to report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The board did confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege, but no actions were taken.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the board before we close? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.